Let's get ourselves ready, council. I gotta get myself ready here.
The council will come to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we take a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, servicemen and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice.
The Malden 375th Committee will appear before the council to share the voices of Malden Banner Program.
All right. Name and address for the record. All right, Mr. 375 himself. I am the committee. Hi, my name is Mark Linehan, 83 Bloomer Street in Malden. For those of you watching at home who don't know me, I'm the proud husband of City Councilor Amanda Linehan. Just in case someone thought it was a conspiracy. I love Amanda. So, hi everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'll make this quick. I know your time is precious. I'm here tonight primarily to unveil the banners of our Voices of Malden Project, which we just saw out in the hall there. But I also would like to quickly update all of you and the public on Malden's 375th anniversary. So, over a year ago, our mayor created an advisory committee to plan out a full year of events and experiences to celebrate the 375th anniversary of the establishment of the town of Malden in 1649. Since January over the past year, the committee has incorporated this milestone into regular city events, such as the Fourth of July events and the inauguration. But we've also created a series of special events, lectures, exhibits, and tours meant to generate excitement, curiosity, and pride in this amazing city that we call home. So, very quickly, I want to first thank our mayor for his dedication and planning and passion for our history and diligence in lifting up all the voices of Malden. I want to thank the numerous members of the committee: Deborah Burke, Donna Denencourt, Doris St. Martin, Hilda Torres, Anderson Rose, Ron Cochrane, John Parsland, Kevin Duffy, Linda Klein, Linda Thorson, Becca McFeeters, Joan Ford Monjeau, and also the incredibly hard work of Kathleen Manning Hall, Maria Louise, and Elena Savino. I'm trying to be short, so I'm speaking too fast. So, I'm here specifically to talk about the Voices of Malden Project, which we just unveiled out in the lobby. This was lovingly stolen from the Boston Women's Memorial in downtown Boston on Comm Ave. They have three statues of Lucy Stone, Abigail Adams, and Phyllis Wheatley, and they've been there for about 20 years. But last year, current leaders of Boston had their voices recorded in the Voices of these famous women, and QR codes were added to the statues so that passersby have the opportunity not just to look at our history, but can listen to it and add another layer of connection from our past to our present. So, Abigail Adams is voiced by Attorney General Andrea Campbell. Lucy Stone is voiced by Mayor Michelle Wu. And Phyllis Wheatley is voiced by Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley. And it was so successful, I immediately thought of it as an idea for our 375th. And when I came to the committee with the idea, it had already been proposed and scrapped. Like all great ideas that I have.
The council will come to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we take a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, servicemen and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. We honor and acknowledge the Massachusetts Pennecook and Pawtucket peoples, whose ancestral lands we now call home and on which we gather today. We express gratitude to the indigenous people who have cared for this land for generations, predating European colonization and continuing to the present. Moving forward, in particularly this time of year, we are committed to ensuring that the histories, voices and contributions of indigenous people are recognized and respected in the life of our city this Thanksgiving week. And then clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linnahan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Sika. Counselor Semenelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counsel President Winslow.
Here. Under the provisions of open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Media Arts, will be recording this evening's meeting and is broadcasting this on cable television and online. So just be aware, there will be an audio and video recording of this meeting. A first order of business.
The Malden 375th Committee will appear before the council to share the Voices of Malden banner program.
All right. Your name and address for the record.
All right, Mr. 375 himself. I am the committee. Hi, my name is Mark Linnahan, 83 Bloomer Street in Malden. For those of you watching at home who don't know me, I'm the proud husband of City Councilor Amanda Linnahan. Just in case someone thought it was a conspiracy. I love Amanda. So hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'll make this quick. I know your time is precious. I'm here tonight primarily to unveil the banners of our Voices of Malden project, which we just saw out in the hall there. But I also would like to quickly update all of you and the public on Malden's 375th anniversary. So over a year ago, our mayor created an advisory committee to plan out a full year of events and experiences to celebrate the 375th anniversary of the establishment of the town of Malden in 1649. Since January over the past year, the committee has incorporated this milestone into regular city events, such as the Fourth of July events and the inauguration. But we've also created a series of special events, lectures, exhibits and tours, meant to generate excitement, curiosity and pride in this amazing city that we call home. So very quickly, I want to first thank our mayor for his dedication and planning and passion for our history and diligence in lifting up all the voices of Malden. I want to thank the numerous members of the committee, Deborah Burke, Donna Denencourt, Dora St. Martin, Hilda Torres, Anderson Rose, Ron Cochran, John Parsland, Kevin Duffy, Linda Klein, Linda Thorson, Becca McFeeters, Joan Ford Monjeau, and also the incredibly hard work of Kathleen Manning Hall, Maria Louise and Elena Savino. I'm trying to be short, so I'm speaking too fast. So I'm here specifically to talk about the Voices of Malden project, which we just unveiled out in the lobby. This was lovingly stolen from the Boston Women's Memorial in downtown Boston on Comm Ave. They have three statues of Lucy Stone, Abigail Adams and Phyllis Wheatley, and they've been there for about 20 years. But last year, current leaders of Boston had their voices recorded in the voices of these famous women, and QR codes were added to the statues so that passersby have the opportunity not just to look at our history, but can listen to it and add another layer of connection from our past to our present. So Abigail Adams is voiced by Attorney General Andrea Campbell. Lucy Stone is voiced by Mayor Michelle Wu, and Phyllis Wheatley is voiced by Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley. And it was so successful, I immediately thought of it as an idea for our 375th, and when I came to the committee with the idea, it had already been proposed and scrapped. Like all great ideas that I have, someone else thought of it first. But the idea was because we couldn't think of a single location to have all these QR codes. We didn't have a single space for them. So the committee then decided to create a banner, so we could take all the histories of all the communities of Malden and have them in one spot, and then we can move them wherever we see fit. So these portable banners, the plan right now is to have one in City Hall and one at the library to reach as many people as possible. But this is also an ongoing project. We could add more voices, we could tell more stories and have it in an engaging way that people can listen to. Unfortunately, this meant I had to find primary sources and writings to record, and that took a lot of time and effort. I want to thank Dora St. Martin and Linda Thorson, who are both immensely helpful with getting the research on this started. A huge thank you to Ryan Reed and Philip Wright at the Malden Public Library, who are doing amazing work as our local historians. I also want to thank Megan Sandberg-Zakian, who directed the recordings for the Boston Women's Memorial and was enormously helpful to me. And a huge thank you to the gracious and incomparable Lisa Cagno for putting up with me haunting the city council offices for much of the recordings. I want to thank quickly the people who lent their voices to the project. First, I would like to thank you, the Malden City Council, for reading our famous Malden Town instructions. With the way things are these days, I don't think there are many legislatures in this country where if you asked the members, can one of your colleagues' spouses record your voice, you would get unanimous support and participation. But you all trusted me with your voices and your talent, so I just really want to thank you all so much. You all knocked it out of the park. I want to give my particular gratitude to Counselor Spatafora, who hosted me at his house only a couple of hours after he landed at Logan. So thank you so much for having me. He had better things to do rather than go off a plane, and he had me over instead. We have so many, we have so much wonderful history in this city, and it's just a snapshot of some of the things we have. Our first mayor, Elisha Converse, I learned was often described during his lifetime as the first citizen of Malden, and not just our first mayor, but he was known as our first citizen. And so I could not think of anyone better. No one better than our first citizen today, our principal, our coach and my friend Dana Brown. I want to thank Dana Brown so much for being Elisha Converse. We had, over 100 years ago, a Malden state rep named George Howard Fall used the occasion of his very first speech in the State House to call for the immediate granting of the right to vote to women, 20 years before the 19th Amendment was ratified. And so I want to thank our own state rep, who has a legacy and reputation for leading the fight on civil rights, our own Steve Altrino. One of our most glorious former residents is the great Emma Fall Schofield, the first woman appointed to be a judge in Massachusetts and a giant in Zonta. So I want to thank our current president of Zonta-Malden, Maria Louise, for being the wonderful voice of Emma Fall Schofield. James Redpath was one of the nation's most radical abolitionists and the man who got the Lincoln administration to open diplomatic relations with Haiti. And for the voice of James Redpath, I enlisted my neighbor and friend Jamie Wilson, who I knew best as a fellow girl dad and BB dad. But it turns out, he's also arguably Malden's most successful historian, professor at Salem State and the author of six books, including his newest book, Martin Luther King Jr. in American Life. So a huge thank you to Dr. Jamie Wilson. I, of course, had to get the dulcet tones of Neil Anderson on the project, and he does a beautiful job with Herbert Jackson's post-election victory letter. So thank you, Counselor Anderson, for that. Dora St. Martin found some amazing texts of a young mill girl named Harriet Hanson-Robinson, who got her fellow workers to go out on strike before the word "strike" even existed. And Dora lent the voice to that, so thank you so much. I wanted to find something special for our mayor to record, and after going down many rabbit holes and dead ends, I compiled the military orders that the Massachusetts Provincial Congress sent to the Malden militia in the two months of the revolution where the war was basically just Massachusetts against England. And Malden was on the front lines, and we had a lot of amazing orders back and forth, and the mayor did an awesome job with that. And it also includes a passage of a letter that George Washington sent to the people of Massachusetts, thanking us for our service dated July 4th, 1775. I want to give a huge thank you to Elena Savino for designing those beautiful banners out there. And I want to thank you all so much for your support for the 375th anniversary. Thank you, everybody.
Can we actually bring the banners in so people at home can see what they look like?
Maybe.
Okay. Do we need a hand or what?
They're slightly delicate, so we'll find out.
All right, I'll give you a hand.
If someone messes up, it's me.
Just the podium, just face it this way. Yeah. Oh, what? Oh, the other. Now turn, okay, now turn it around. Okay, now they're gonna, all right. All right, hold it up higher.
So it's also, okay. We went to Vanuatu territory very quickly. So these recordings will also be on the city website. And what's so great about this is that this is a dynamic project. We can always add recordings anytime we find new primary sources, primary text, different communities that we want to be reaching out to. We have such a wonderfully diverse city, and we want every community to be represented. So if we find more recordings of, you know, firsthand accounts of Malden, we can add and we can record as much as we want. The limit does not exist. So yeah, this was a really fulfilling project. This is such a wonderfully culturally and historically rich city. We're all so lucky to call this place home. So this was a lot of fun to research, and the work has only begun. So there's so much more to do to celebrate this great city.
All right, great. Thank you, Counselor Semenelli.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I just want to take my hat off to you, because, you know, without this, without you, this wouldn't have been possible. And I know it was a lot of hard work, and it was, you know, something, something different. And you really had a lot of patience, especially when it came to me. So I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. I didn't know how bad my voice was until, you know, he let me know. So thank you. Great work.
I have to thank you, Counselor Semenelli. No, I have to say, you know, I thought this was a pretty good idea, but then listening to how you all recorded it, it sounds magnificent. Like the way that your town instructions, I really encourage you to listen to them. The way that all your voices speak in one voice and flow one right into the next one. And each one of you, there's, I didn't plan it this way, but each one of you, there's some moment, you only get like 72 words each, and each of you, there's some moment that like is just punches so hard. And, you know, the fact that we declared independence and pushed the idea before the nation thought of it, you know, it's, our town instructions are really a special thing, and I think it's easily my favorite interpretation I've heard so far, is all of you doing it in your own unique voices and what you bring to it. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next order of business then, so.
Members of the Disability Commission, Police Chief Cronin and Fire Chief Royo will appear before the city council to give a report on energy cards.
Emergency cards, right?
Excuse me, emergency cards, my bad.
All right, Maria Louise.
Good evening. Morgan, is Amanda Bellis on?
I am.
So I have the privilege of serving on the Disability Commission as the ADA compliance officer. And I have to say, this is one of our most proactive commissions. They work on a lot of projects and are always really busy. And one of the projects we did this year had to do with a collaboration with the Mass, let me make sure I get this title right, the Mass Commission for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. And thanks to Amanda Bellis, our chair, we collaborated with them to bring emergency cards to our police chief and our fire chief that will assist the deaf and hard of hearing when they have to communicate with an EMT or a police officer or a firefighter. So I'm gonna hand it over to Amanda Bellis to explain the project, and then we'll probably hear from the chiefs.
Thanks, Maria. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, for those of you who don't know me, my name's Amanda Bellis, and I am the chair of the Disability Commission. I first and foremost want to thank the members of the council for this opportunity to speak before you on behalf of the commission in conjunction with both chiefs. And I especially want to thank Council President Winslow for providing the time on the agenda this evening to be able to do so. So, excuse me, many months ago, like Maria introduced, the commission became aware of these emergency service, services card. They were created by the Massachusetts Commission for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing in partnership with the Department of Fire Services and also the Office of Emergency Medical Services. So what are these cards exactly? As Maria alluded to, essentially, they help first responders and individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing be able to better communicate in emergency, excuse me, situation. So for example, I don't know, I think each council member, I believe you have one of, a copy of the card in front of you? If not, I know we have copies to provide you. But essentially, so if an individual who is deaf or hard of hearing is in an emergency situation, then first responders can find out information from them. The images and information available on these cards allow that individual to point to an image, point to information that helps first responders determine things such as, you know, what pain level the individual is experiencing, what is the location of the pain they're experiencing, and also what is the individual's preference when it comes to communicating with them. Likewise, first responders can in turn also point to images and information on the cards to essentially ask questions of the individual. We know that in emergency situations, effective communication is crucial. So as soon as the commission, we learn more about these cards, we very much, I would say literally every member of the commission was very much on board with figuring out, how do we bring these cards to Malden, and how do we work with our first responders to implement them? So that's where Maria comes in. As we all know in the city, we are extremely fortunate to have Maria at the city. She coordinated the conversation with me, Maria, and the two chiefs to discuss these cards. And I have to say, if I recall real quick correctly, I don't even think the conversation with the chiefs was 20 minutes long. Both, right away, were 100% on board and ready to figure out how to implement this communications tool. I do want to extend a tremendous thank you to both chiefs on behalf of the commission. Just your willingness to be super responsive and jump on board with getting this done. So thank you to both of you. I actually do want to turn the conversation over to the chiefs, but before doing so, I am going to pull a point of personal privilege, if you will, and I want to acknowledge and recognize every member of the Malden Disability Commission. Every single member is extremely talented and 100% dedicated to and passionate about making Malden as accessible as possible for every single person, you know, residents and visitors. And I encourage and invite each member of the council, if you have not yet attended one of our meetings, to attend one of our monthly meetings, to not only, you know, get to know each member, but also to get a better understanding of the work we are doing for Malden. So with that, thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at the end, and I turn the conversation over to the chiefs.
Thank you very much, Amanda. All right, Chief Cronin, we'll go first.
Good evening, city council. I appreciate the opportunity for myself and Chief Royo to present this new, this new resource, this new tool for us. I especially want to thank Amanda Bellis of the Malden Disability Commission and Maria Louise for collaborating and getting this put together. I can tell you that as a police officer, for years, I was in a traffic unit on the motorcycles, and I've, you know, conducted a lot of traffic stops, and countless times I have come upon individuals where I could have utilized something like this. So to get this now is incredible. Right now, if you have the cards, I'm just gonna talk to you about this one, this law enforcement related specifically. This, this is in Malden Police Department crews as we speak. The sergeants have them, all the sector cars have them. And what they have, when we get these distributed to folks, they have this in their car, and this is inside this envelope. It's typically on their visor or in their door, readily accessible. You know, and the first thing they do is they'll put it up, and it says, "I am a deaf person," or "I am hard of hearing," one of the other. So with that, right off the bat, this is, this is a good start. You can see the card, the first thing we look at when we look at this card is the blue area here on this side. Right off the bat, we're gonna establish how we communicate, whether it's an interpreter, texting, writing, lip reading, gestures, or an assistive listening device. So right off the bat, that's critically important, because I know that communication is the key in almost every situation. And if you don't have good communication, things can go sideways, particularly in a car stop rapidly. So to have this, this tool, I consider this a de-escalation tool to have with us right now. So that's how I'm looking at it. Another thing I look at when I, when we're looking at these cards is it strengthens our relationships with vulnerable communities. They're gonna know that the Malden Police Department is, and the Malden Fire Department and the city of Malden has taken the time to consider them and include them in our planning. So that's incredibly important. If I can go back to that card for a minute, you can see, this is, there's a lot of information on the other side of this card. We point to the license, the driver's license, registration for the car, license to carry identification, and you'll see a host of other things here, stop sign, red light, speeding, texting while driving, crosswalk violation, broken headlight, taillight. We can point, you're being warned, or you're being ticketed. It does say arrested, but I don't even want to think about that. We do our very best not to ever arrest anybody. On the bottom, you can see where it says "help," and it says the person, you know, they could be lost, or they need gas, or they're looking for a hospital, or some other reason. And the best option on here for me is where it says notes, where they can put their name and a phone number, or somebody else's name and a phone number for us to call as well. So that's extremely handy for us. When you're looking at the other card, of course, this is, this is, you know, more for the Fire Department. Obviously, it applies to the police as well, but that card is very similar. If you're in a situation, you can, from a medical aid to a, to a house fire and everything in between, you can address almost anything with this. Even if a person, even if they're not hard of hearing or deaf, if there's some other reason, a catastrophic injury, something like that, where they're unable to communicate, we can start pointing here, level of pain, things like that. So you've seen this. So these are incredibly useful for us, simple symbols to use. You know, and for me, it just, when you're looking at the safety of people in a car, the operator, passengers, going back to the law enforcement side of this, it does increase the safety for everybody in their car, for the police officer. So with that, I, the last thing I want to say in that, it does reflect modern inclusive policing with this. So with that, going forward, we're gonna be looking to hook up again with the Disability Commission to see how we can get this distributed widely across the city. And if anybody wants to know any more information on this, they can go to mass.gov/mcdhh. That's the Mass Commission for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. You can also go to their web, email, mcdsafety@mass.gov if you need any more information on that. And I thank you all for your time. Amanda, thank you so much for this, this incredible tool. Maria, thank you.
Chief Roy, you have anything to say, or just, you're good? Okay, thanks for coming out.
Thank you, thank you, Amanda.
And I just want to recognize that one of our members, Marilyn Andrews, is also on the screen. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment or any written comments?
We did have one person signed up for public comment. They emailed me, but also he's present. John, I don't know if, do you want me to read your email or? Okay. So John did email me. So, uh, John did email me, uh, regarding paper 431 dash 24. "The Malden City Council should be warned that the FCC lost a ruling to the Environmental Health Trust in 2021, with the Court of Appeals having issued the following decisions. One, FCC's order arbitrarily and capriciously determined that guidelines are adequately protected against harmful effects of exposure to RF radiation unrelated to cancer. Two, FCC's conclusions regarding adequacy of its testing procedures were arbitrarily and capricious. Three, FCC's conclusions regarding impact of RF radiation on children were arbitrarily and capricious. And four, FCC's conclusions regarding long-term exposure to RF radiation, pulsation, or modulation and implications of recent technological developments were arbitrary and capricious. In light of this ruling, I would have to believe that Malden City Council is incapable of determining that the installation of wireless infrastructure in Malden could be deemed in the public interest. Sufficient information to make an informed decision is not available. And if the councilors were to claim otherwise, then the decision should also be questioned as arbitrary and capricious. If the city council pretends it is informed enough to determine that additional small cell equipment is in the, in, excuse me, is in the public good, that could subject the city to additional threats of litigation, both from utility companies and from the public. It would also further jeopardize public health over and above the 100-plus small cell antennas that have already been approved and tax the health of Malden residents, many of which aren't even aware. Furthermore, just on the technical side, wireless technology is less secure and very energy inefficient compared to a wired data transmission. We are literally bathing ourselves in wasted energy. One way or another, all of our bodies are paying the price for that. Both of the city's map of cell, small, small, excuse me, small cell equipment and a map that I have generated based on posted agendas and minutes are attached to this email. Please vote no to Counselor McDonald's proposal if I have not misunderstood the language. I did send him an email with questions, but did not receive a response. Sincerely, John Seah, 37 Pierce Street, Malden."
Okay, um, no further public comment then?
That was all the public comment.
All right, so that concludes that part of the agenda. Um, so moving on to the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved, two appointments to be placed on file, two appointments to be confirmed, six orders to be referred to finance, and two papers to refer to rules and, rules and ordinance committees. So I have a couple, uh, comments. Um, I did look at the minutes for November 12th and I did have some comments, so I would, at my own volition, I'm, I'm taking that off so we can, um, I can have Morgan make those changes and, and we'll re-update those. Um, and then there was a typo on paper 41, 42124. Um, that confirmation does require consent of the city council. So that, um, rather than, um, just being, um, confirmed and, uh, put on file, we will, um, the, the consent agenda will be to refer that to personnel appointments for interview and we will interview, um, uh, Madeline McCormick, you know, uh, in the future. And then, um, uh, let's see. Uh, I just want to make a note that there is an appointment here for, uh, Council Anderson, um, to be, um, a member of the Malden Redevelopment Board. I, uh, suggested that that be on the consent agenda because I think we're all familiar with Council Anderson. I don't think we need to, um, have him in for an interview or anything like that. So, um, so those are just some of my comments on it. And then Counselor McDonald, did you want, um, we did get a communication from the mayor on, uh, some of the finance papers. Did you want to have that read into the record or? Let's see, let me just, uh, yeah.
Um, I, it is, it's a long-ish, uh, letter.
Yeah.
So that's about a page and a half.
So I, I think.
I wasn't gonna propose that because the point of the consent agenda is to just like move it to committee to talk about it.
Right, so that is in your packet. I think, uh, Clerk Cagno has given that to everybody. So that, that is in your packet. And that will be, go along with the consent agenda to the finance committee on those papers. So that's how we handle that, so.
And it will be attached to the papers.
It will be attached to the paper. So just, so you have that, um, a little more explanation. So suggest you, you all read that before those come into finance. So does anybody have their, have any?
And just, just to state, this, this letter discusses the status of cash reserves for the city in it, as, as it relates to these proposed appropriations.
So that, that'll be attached to this agenda and, and to the agenda of the finance committee. So it'll be available there, so. And it is in your, your packet tonight, so. Does anybody have any questions or, or comments on any of the papers that they would like to take off? Yeah, for Counselor O'Malley?
I, the only question I have is, what, what does it mean to approve the consent agenda? Uh, so you're saying we're, we're removing the meetings from November 12th?
The minutes, yes.
Uh, yeah, the minutes.
That'll be removed, yeah.
But the minutes from the 19th would be approved?
Yes, yeah.
The 21st would be removed?
Four, you mean 421?
Yeah, four, yeah, 421 would be removed.
421, that, that is, that we're just changing that to being confirmed, to being referred to personal appointments, so.
And then 422 would be approved, approved?
Yep.
Approved.
Yep.
Referred to finance, finance?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody clear on what we're doing here?
Yes.
Uh, motion by Counselor Seika to approve the consent agenda as amended, second by Counselor Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call because of the confirmation.
Okay, we, we actually, we have to take a roll call, sorry. So Clerk will take the roll because there are confirmations. So like Counselor Anderson's confirmation, so we're under our rules, we have to take a vote on that. So, all right, so take a roll call vote on the consent agenda. All right.
Uh, Counselor Colin Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor Seika?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Council President Winslow?
Yes, so the consent agenda is, uh, confirmed and those appointments are, are confirmed. So next order of business.
Paper 433 dash 24, mayoral appointment. Alexander Pratt, 26 Holden Street, Unit 3, Malden, as the Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. Said term subject to confirmation by the city council to commence upon the retirement of Deborah Burke and to expire November 21st, 2027.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna actually hand the gavel over to Counselor O'Malley because I'm gonna take responsibility for the paper. And as I'm Chair of the Personnel Appointments Committee and my recommendation tonight is to, um, I asked Mr. Pratt to come and speak to us. And then, um, you know, rather than referring this to personnel appointments, um, since we're all pretty familiar with Mr. Pratt's work, it, it just, uh, to do the confirmation perhaps tonight, um, unless councillors would prefer to just have referred to uh, personal appointments, but it just seemed that. All right, is everybody comfortable just, uh, going forward and having, uh, Mr. Pratt, uh, maybe speak a little bit about the appointment and then people can ask questions? So, uh, uh, Mr. Pratt, welcome. Congratulations. Let me turn the podium mic on and, uh, thank you so much for being here tonight. So great, you're on.
Thank you, uh, Council President. Thank you all of you for having me here. I also want to thank, uh, obviously Mayor Christensen for appointing me and for supporting me, not just in this appointment, but over, um, many, many years of, uh, working, uh, in the city. Uh, I also want to thank Maria Louise, Ron Hogan, and of course Debbie Burke, who I've had the privilege of working for and learning from over the last six years. Uh, I started at the Malden Redevelopment Authority in 2018, now the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. Um, when I started, I was the Community Development Director, so managing the CDBG program, which you all know and love, um, and are familiar with every, uh, every spring when we go through the budget process. Um, but focusing on managing our park projects, um, our social services or our public services grants, um, and then helping with the rehab program. My responsibilities have grown over time, um, from that, focusing just on that program to, um, during COVID and even before COVID, working more on affordable housing development, um, working with the team that was working on inclusionary zoning, creating an affordable housing trust. And then when COVID hit, we had an influx of funds and a huge demand, um, from our residents who are facing eviction or foreclosure and from, um, our small businesses who were at risk of shutting down. So, um, working with the team was very proud to be a part of our COVID-19 response efforts, which included our Small Business Assistance Program, a rental assistance program, and then eviction prevention program. Um, and that last program also worked on foreclosure prevention as well. So, um, yeah, I have been really proud to be a part of that work for a long time. And then about a year and a half ago, uh, as you all know, the department was reorganized and two deputy director roles were created. I, um, have been in the role of Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development for the last year and a half. Um, in that role, I manage a team of five, uh, professionals and we have a great team. We work on affordable housing development, housing rehab, down payment assistance, um, Mass Save. We do a little bit here and there with, um, climate resiliency. We just work on a whole boatload of projects that many of you see across the city in your wards or, uh, just across the city. In the deputy director role, I've also taken more, uh, bigger role in helping, um, assist with the department's finances, um, particularly making sure that we maximize the use of federal funds to cover administrative costs so that the impact on the city budget of OSPCD staff is as limited as possible. Um, so I've done that work, uh, in partnership, obviously, with Deb Burke, but also with our senior accountant, Roberta Connolly. Um, and we've really, um, done a lot of work, really since the merger in 2021, to make sure that the city impact of OSPCD staff is limited and that we are maximizing federal funds, um, to cover salary fringe and other eligible costs. More recently, working on planning work, so the Open Space and Recreation Plan, um, which, um, many, if not most of you have been involved in, um, assisting with the Climate Action Plan, which you all approved earlier, uh, this fall, and then preparing for the next master plan, which I know you all are very excited about, especially when, um, we're talking about building commercial revenue, focusing more on economic development and making sure that we have a long-term plan for our city's finances. Um, so really eager to get to work on all of those issues. Um, I really can't say enough about how much Debbie has left OSPCD in a place, um, where it's really set up to succeed. She's done a lot of work with the merger, with, um, the department's finances, with hiring a great staff, training a great staff and, and retaining good folks. So, um, really grateful to her for that. Um, and I count myself among, uh, among that. Her, her impact on me is, is, uh, hard to overstate. She taught me everything I know about community development. So, um, when I think about what has made her successful in her role, the role that I'm, before you all, um, tonight, I think about communication, I think about consistency, I think about hard work. Debbie has a relationship with each of you that she has built over many years of working together. Um, I have many of those relationships already, but I want to keep, um, working and growing and deepening those relationships and learning how to work with you in this new role. And that means being, uh, you know, doing things that Debbie does, calling you back the same day or the next day, you know, as soon as, as soon as she can, um, working with you, um, on your projects, um, as we all do, um, and trying to get you the information you need. Whether or not, um, you happen to agree with, uh, the administration or the office on a particular issue or not, doesn't matter, making sure that we're sharing information and all on the same page and communicating. Um, so those are all things that I hope to emulate. I know I have, uh, very big shoes to fill, kind of like clown-sized shoes to fill. Um, but I'm gonna give it my all. Um, I'm gonna be learning, uh, if I'm learning now under Deb for six years, I'm gonna keep learning in this new role, uh, with your confirmation. So I just want to say thank you. It's an honor to, um, do this work alongside each of you. It's an honor to serve the city that I live in, uh, with each of you. I'm excited to get to work with all of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Counselor Seminelli, you were up first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Alex, congratulations on the appointment. And, uh, you know, I just want to say that, uh, you're right. It's a, it's a big role to fill and big shoes to fill. And, you know, Debbie's been around since Urban Renewal. Uh, but, you know, I, since I came back onto the council, uh, you know, I've been able to develop a, a, a good working relationship with you. We've worked side by side on several projects, ongoing, some finished. Uh, and they all worked out well, not that we always agreed on everything. Constructive criticism from both sides is great. Uh, that's what it's all about. But at the end of the day, you know, we got it done. And, you know, there's a young staff up there now, uh, you know, and, you know, you're a young guy that's been working up there and, and working your tail off from what I can see. And, uh, you know, the only thing I could say, the information, the advice I could give you is, you know, just like listen to the councilors on, you know, where they want to go. And, and I think you've been able to do that. And just trying to, you know, you know, ease their way into new things. Sometimes us councilors aren't, uh, you know, we're not so easy on, or eager on, uh, going into new things. We don't like change sometimes, you know? And, uh, but, you know, I think that, uh, you know, things are changing and, uh, you know, obviously, you know, our relationship will be a good working relationship just as long as I continue to get the lion's share of the funding. No, I'm just playing. Uh, I knew you'd like that, Steve. No, but honestly, I.
You probably should, some of the CDBG money, you make that point.
I just, I, I just happen to live in the right spot. But what I'm saying is that, Alex, you know, I, 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 I think this is a good, a good fit for you and I, I, I welcome you aboard and congratulations, uh, for, you know, for, you know, taking this position because it's not an easy one to take. Um, and, uh, I, I'm a true believer of promoting from within. And I think the mayor, mayor's office did a fantastic job by doing that. So, and, and, and listen, and feel free to call e-every one of us councilors too, uh, you know, when you start to run into some unfamiliar waters. So congratulations and just keep up the good work, my brother. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Condon?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I've had the pleasure of, uh, working with Alex the last couple of years, uh, on the Dever Park Project, uh, which he was, um, excellent, working with the neighbors and making sure the line of communication, we never crossed it, just kept them informed. And I know Janelle Zibitz, who played a tremendous part in, uh, as the neighborhood liaison. She, I think she respected Alex too. Uh, I know you always got back to me quickly. We got the punch list, you did that too. Of course, I was driving you crazy, but, uh, but good luck. And, uh, I'm so happy that we, uh, are promoting from within, especially capable people like yourself. You can just look at your resume and see that you'll be able to get the job done. If you want to get it done, we'll get it done. That's for sure. So good luck, good luck in the future. And, uh, anything I can do for you or our colleagues up here, I'm sure they'll be very helpful. Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Linnian.
Thank you, Alex. Congratulations. It's so nice to see you here tonight. I don't have much more to add than what my colleagues have said, other than to echo the sentiment that it's amazing to see the career growth that's happened. I'm sure you remember this, but I was in your interview when you joined the MRA, particularly memorable because my child took a header off the playground in the middle of his interview, and I got a call from the emergency room and had to leave, and then had to call him and apologize, and he still took the job. I was so excited about his candidacy, and I thought, oh, my God, now I've ruined it by doing this really unprofessional thing. But Alex stuck around, and to see the growth and the programs that you've started and the new position that you're in now, and watching how you've taken on a lot of Debbie's mentorship, I see how she does that for folks at all levels of your staff, and I feel like you've really taken seriously what it means to be a good manager. And, you know, because there's the programmatic side, there's the engagement side, but there's also a people side. And one of the things that I learned a lot through being on the MRA board and then watching it become part of OSP, or part of City Hall as we created OSPCD, is that there's people who've spent their whole career in that department, and there's some very young, newer staff. And as someone who manages people as well at my job, that is so challenging, and I feel like you've done a really, really remarkable job at just balancing the different needs. There's so many different disciplines and areas of expertise that our staff have in that department. So, kudos to you for navigating all of that and building a career. I love to see that we've made a culture where people feel like they can stay here and actually want to move into these department head jobs. So, thank you so much for putting your name in for consideration and for getting to this point. It's really great to see you get to this level.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Colan Hayes.
Thank you. So, thank you. Congratulations. I know we spoke on the phone, and we talked about how it was good to also speak a little bit about it for anyone watching, for transparency. So, you have great skills. I've seen you organize things, and I think it's great. I think that Debbie was so awesome about calling back, like, immediately, and she was always a straight shooter. I respected her so much for that. Even if she was telling me something that she knew I didn't want to hear, she would tell me, and so I expect that, the same thing from you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and so, communication, we talked about, being able to communicate, you know, quickly, but also honestly, and like just be vulnerable when you have to with people in our community when they're looking for answers. And the other thing that we talked about when I was looking at your resume, and I don't know how many people applied, but the one thing we talked about was the not a lot of experience managing people. You manage projects, but not people, and that's going to be extremely important. There's so many people to manage and like navigate, and so you did tell me that this last past year, that you had managed five people in, you know, in your role now, which makes me feel better, and I know that you'll grow with that. It's very hard to manage people, probably harder than the projects. And so, just as long as everybody, you know, you make them feel comfortable and have come in and, you know, have a place that you want to come to work, I think you'll do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Right. You're welcome. Councilor McDonald.
Congratulations, Alex. I'm so excited that you've got this nod from the city. I echo all the comments about your skills and professionalism, commitment, dedication, and follow-through. I actually have questions for you, and I have two questions. The first is, could you talk a little bit about your commitments to equity? Because I think in planning and in looking ahead, we have some of the greatest opportunities to serve and benefit the residents in this community that need the most support, from housing to supporting people who take the bus, our seniors, our young people, making sure that they're involved, making sure that their needs are front and center, and we're not just listening to the loudest voices. So, can you talk about how you would approach that in this role?
Absolutely, and I think equity is not just about the planning side and getting the feedback from folks and making sure that that feedback is representative, although it is and must include that, but it's also about making sure that our programs are accessible to people from different backgrounds. So, one of the things that we do in the CDPG program is we get, so we fund social services by nonprofits. We call our public services program, and every quarter, we'll get information from those nonprofits that we are funding about who they are serving. And at the end of the year, we look and see, okay, well, is this serving a, you know, we're a diverse community. Are the people we are serving represented in, representative of the community that we represent and that we're trying to serve? So, we do part of this, I think, with data, and then part of it is just kind of the one-on-one, that personal touch, I think you alluded to it, Councilor Colan Hayes. When someone comes in and they're not speaking English, or they're speaking English, but they're, if you're talking about like a detailed rehab project or something where maybe there's not a full understanding, making sure that you're making resources available. So, part of equity, part of the equity work that we're doing is we're working with Elena Martinez, as many other offices are, to create a language access plan specific to the department and specific to many of the programs that we operate. And then, of course, it also means making sure that there's access and accessibility when we do community engagement. Sometimes that means having interpreters or translators at a meeting. Sometimes it means having focus groups. Not everyone is going to be able to come out on whatever weeknight we're doing a park meeting, and even if we provide a translator, it doesn't mean they're going to have the time or maybe even the interest in showing up. So, I think we're always learning and trying new things when it comes to equity, and also when it comes to just community engagement writ large. One thing that we did new this year for the Open Space and Recreation Plan is we have a number of small gift cards from Stop &amp; Shop, and I think we got one from Rock Spot as well. And so, when we advertised the survey, which we're asking people to take a 10-minute survey, so it's a significant ask, right? And it was translated in all different languages and so forth, we said, we're entering you into a raffle, so they kind of understand that there's some value in it to them. But, we also want to emphasize that we're actually going to run with the feedback you give us, and to the extent we're able, we're going to take your comments, and we actually want them. We're not just doing this to check a box. We're doing community engagement because we want to actually understand what people are asking for and then do our best to serve that. The last thing I'll say about that, because I could talk about this all night, and I'm not sure that's what anyone wants, is when we do community engagement, we're asking people for feedback, we need to be careful to be asking for things that are actually on the table. Sometimes we run into trouble unintentionally, I think, when we say, hey, tell us what you want about this project. But if we don't say, oh, but we're capped to $800,000, people are going to build a Taj Mahal on their heads, and then they're going to be disappointed about what we show, and that kind of erodes that trust with the community. So, I think being honest with our constraints, whether that's financial, whether it's regulatory, whether it's just the space we have, or whatever it might be, being forthright with people so they understand, okay, you're asking me for feedback about this, this, and this. That doesn't mean you're going to turn a playground into a swimming pool, but it means we want to have, want to hear feedback about what types of play elements you have in the, you want to have in the playground, for example. So, those are kind of my, some of my thoughts on both equity and community engagement. I think the last thing I'll say about it, the last, last thing I'll say about it, is it's about intention, and it's about openness to learning and trying new things. What worked for equity 10 years ago, 20 years ago, is not what works today. We're still figuring out what works today, and whatever we figure out is not going to work 10 years from now. So, it's having a growth mindset the whole way through.
Yeah, thank you, Alex, so much. I appreciate that answer, and I have seen you and your staff really try out and develop new approaches that are above and beyond what other communities have done in order to reach the broadest possible set of residents, those who are, yes, least likely to be able to show up on a weekday evening and sit in a meeting in city council chambers, right? And so, I really look forward to working with you on that. I could talk about it all night, but I don't think, I agree with you. Not everybody wants to hear that, but a more systematic approach where we can really knit those efforts together, I think, could be really helpful in making sure that we're really casting the brightest possible net. So, I look forward to working with you on that. The next question is just, what do you need from us as the city council in order to be able to succeed in this role? I'm particularly mindful of the staff retention challenges that are before us. We've spent some time supporting the evolution of the office. We know we have staff who have a lot of runway in their careers ahead of us. We can't do things in this city that take strategy and planning without your staff. And I think we've seen that when we lose people, things can grind to a halt. Losing our transportation planner most recently just meant that a whole bunch of projects have to be shelved while we do the hiring. So, I do think that's actually a serious issue for the city, and I would love to hear your thoughts about how we can support you and how we can support the continuity in the staff in that office.
Sure. Thank you. I think it's twofold. I'll take that as a two-part question.
Sure.
I think the things that will help me succeed in this role from all of you is the same things that help every relationship succeed, which is communication, expectation setting, and if I'm screwing up, or if I think you're screwing up on a project, that we call each other and we talk about it. And I think we have that relationship with many of you, and I'm, you know, I think that's a big part of it. It's just communication, communication, communication. In terms of retaining staff, I think there are some things we can do. I think a big one is showing that we can promote within and that there's a path here. The reality of the economy today, and especially a younger workforce, is they're used to changing jobs, not even every two years, but every year, every year and a half. So, how do we retain those folks and make it instead of one year or one and a half years? How do we make that two or three or even four? And then that can, you know, depending on the person and how much they get used to working here and hopefully loving working here, that can extend beyond, but it's making sure that we're focusing on that. One way to do that is by having more opportunities for internal promotion. When we did the reorg of OSPCD a year and a half ago, that was one of the things that I know Debbie was talking about and passionate about. That wasn't just to provide me with, you know, more management experience, to your point, Councilor, of people, it was also to help the whole organization kind of grow. And we have a number of folks on our staff besides myself who have had other roles in the office, who have moved up, and these tend to be, again, it tends to be a younger workforce that is used to changing jobs every now, every year or two. And if we've been able to, as we've been with some folks, to move them into the next role in the office, that's a great thing when it can work. And it's not always going to work, but to the extent we can, I think we try to, and that's, that really helps the team have a cohesion as well. The other thing is just when we know that there are some roles where for bringing in someone who's newer to their career, they might not stick around for very long, because that's what people are doing. So, how do we anticipate that, and how do we build around not having all these projects stop when turnover inevitably happens? Because whether it's two years or 10 years, people aren't staying here forever. So, how do we make sure that we're anticipating that? And I think that has everything to do from making sure that more than one person kind of is involved in a project. That doesn't mean you need two team leads, but you can have, or project leads, but you can have, like, if there's a transportation planner involved in something, is the senior planner also involved? Or is the deputy director, Kevin Duffy, involved? So, there's some continuity when turnover inevitably happens.
Great. Well, thank you for those answers, and I look forward to supporting your appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Taylor.
Thank you, Council President. I just really briefly want to say, congratulations, Alex. I've enjoyed working with you in many different areas over the past few years and on projects. I've seen firsthand your commitment to our community and the hard work that you do, and I know you do have big shoes to fill, but I have no doubt that you will be able to fill them, and I am just really excited to be able to work with you in your new role.
Thank you.
All right. Councilor Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, congratulations. I can't believe it was six years, but I think I've definitely seen the growth over six years, even with some of your answers to Council McDonald's questions or Council Colan Hayes, is really seeing more of the bigger picture, and sort of what Debbie has always done with us is being honest and pushback and not just, you know, taking your own visions and running with it, but really knowing what the community is looking for, with the council, with the administration, and most of all, the community. But I think, you know, I've seen that growth in working with other projects and, you know, pushback on me, I've pushed back on you, and it does make for a better project when we can really do that. And I'm so, I'm excited to continue to work with you.
Thank you very much.
Councilor O'Malley.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you very much, Alex, for joining us. I think that, as you know, and probably the public knows, like, we agree largely on policy. So, like, for me, this is really not turning on policy. To what Councilor Crowe said, you know, there can be times when we might disagree, but knowing that the person across the table from you is being honest with you and trustworthy, that is really essential to making this succeed. And so, that's really what I'm focused on when it comes to this, you know, particularly with the shoes that we were talking about of Director Burke. She is trusted by every counselor up here. She is trusted by every department head in our city, and that is something that is so valuable that it should be emulated by each and every one of us, not just you, but by really all of us. Because as Councilor Crowe said, that's how you get a better product, by having those honest dialogues. I have never hesitated calling Debbie. I have never hesitated sharing my concerns or my ideas with Debbie, knowing that she will, even if she disagrees with me, we can work it through. So, I hope to develop that type of relationship with you. I look forward to developing that type of relationship with you. One of the questions that I do have is how do you think you would like to grow in this role?
Oh, man. I have a lot of thoughts on that, but firstly, thank you, Councilor. I appreciate your remarks, and I agree with you, and I look forward to doing that as well. I think it's all about relationships, but at a different level, right? I think it's the relationship, balancing the relationship with the mayor and with the council as a whole, as well as the councilors individually. I think I have a lot of experience working with you all on park projects, and that's one type of relationship, but it's a different relationship when we are talking more about policy, or we're talking about economic development, or zoning, or planning, or these bigger things. So, it's building that trust, to your point, Councilor, that you all know, and I know, that we can trust each other, and we're all, even if we're not working towards the same idea or outcome, that we're all working for the same cause, and I believe we are, and I think that really, really helps in that being, of course, working for the residents and trying to make the city better for everybody. The other piece is to, excuse me, to Councilor Hayes's point, I'm sorry, to Councilor Colan Hayes's point, managing a larger staff. So, I've managed five staff for the last year and a half. I've had great mentorship from Debbie and others and that, and we have a great team. So, just making sure that as this transition happens, that I'm not upsetting the apple cart. I think a lot of times when there is a retirement and someone younger comes in, there's this wonder, is there going to be a totally big change? And when Debbie and I talked to staff about this transition, one of the things I said was, I want everyone to know they're coming back to the same job, you know, day one as they were the day before, and I think that's really important, that changes that happen are measured, that they make sense, and that people feel included and involved in them. And I think that, as it applies to the staff, it also applies to the city. Our city is going through changes. That doesn't mean everything changes overnight, and we have to do that in a measured way that is realistic and considers the confines that we're working in. Thank you.
Let's see. Councilor Spatafora.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Alex. Congratulations. I will try to be, offer some new insight, but I think my councils have been very descriptive in terms of the accomplishments you've done, and certainly the shoes you have to fill. And, you know, I'll take off where I want to pick up where the councilor, I can't believe I'm going to say this, O'Malley left off, is, you know, I think, I think trust is important, not just in this role, but I think any role with Inside a City. And I know we have outreach to communities and, I mean, citizens, and that's certainly part of the journey, but Debbie was very good, and so was Karen Anderson in recognizing there's 11 different personalities up here, there's 11 different bosses. She made every one of them, including Debbie, both of them interchangeably feel different, feel unique, and was trustworthy. I always knew when I could say something to Karen Anderson, she would not get back to another councilor. Even, I'm not saying bad things, it was just a matter of bouncing your ideas off, and I think Debbie does that same thing. Debbie was very good of making sure that it was not her responsibility, it was our responsibility to communicate that. And one of the things I'd tell you is listening. Whether you are a leader of five or 50, the best advice I can give you as somebody who manages upwards of about 150 different employees is listening, and it's an active skill that you cannot just do. It's very hard for me to sit there and listen, everybody knows that, right? But the voices, it's not that funny. The voices, the voices of all the stakeholders, right, and the success of this community relies on that. And I think listening to your employees, listening to the other council members, listening to the citizens, listening to the mayor, all those perspectives make you a better leader, right? And then hopefully give you a better outlook and a better product. And those actions and open dialogue, I think, are very important attributes to say. And the last thing I would say in terms of, something Karen Anderson always said to me, and it's stuck with me, is she would say to me, in the council meetings, Craig, I am the smartest partner in that room, but I make sure that everybody else does it. I make sure the public knows, does not know that I'm the smartest person, meaning she was the person that stood behind the council and made us look better and understood her role, and I'm not saying that's not your role, but that's what Debbie has been blessed with, the ability, all those mayors, all those councilors, all those projects, right? And sometimes she got up there to defend them, but she was always good at making sure that she recognized all the support through the building, and that's not an easy thing to do, right? Because personally, you want to reflect on, hey, I did this, it's great, but I think that type of leadership will get you a long way, not just with a political body, but I think your staff. Yeah, so good luck.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Councilor Seega.
Thank you, Council President. I too would like to congratulate you, Alex. I want to echo Councilor Spatafora's remarks. I think that working with Debbie for the past 12 years, she, you never knew what she thought of something. She always listened to you, so I think that's a very important characteristic that you need to bring on to this because... need to bring onto this, because while I'm in support of you, and I am going to be voting for your appointment, I, over the last 24 hours, I'm going to be, I'm going to be the bad person here, but there has been a little bit of rumblings, like, I, I think some counselors may feel that you are more with others than with them, so I think that you need to take this, like, with an open, you know, open mind, and just try to make sure that you're being fair to absolutely all 11 of us. I'm not saying it's me, but I'm saying, you know, I, I have had some conversations where, you know, some people don't feel as heard, and, you know, we just want to make sure that, you know, you're working for the city as a whole, as a community, and you're not going to be put into this role, you know, to push a particular agenda for you, or somebody you may like better than somebody else. I think Debbie never gave us that feeling. I, I could not, Debbie could have hated me, and I would have never known. Like, literally, she just had that way about her, where she was nice to every single one of us. I couldn't tell you which, if she had a favorite of one of us 11, I have no idea who it was.
Chris.
I'm, I'm not quite sure it was you, Counsel Siminelli.
She's also still here.
But if you can just, you've worked with her for the last six years, and that is just one characteristic that, when I think back of how Debbie has managed that department, she, you know, you'd call her and you'd ask her her opinion of something, and she would, oh yeah, like, that's great, like, and then she, whether she hated it or she didn't, she supported you wholeheartedly and helped you to try to accomplish what it was that you were trying to do. So I can just, I just hope that, you know, you can, they really are, they might be bozo the clown shoes that you need to fill. So I, I, I wish you well, and I, I, I hope that, you know, it's everything that you dreamed of and more in this role, so.
Thank you. That's a, well, very well taken.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank, I actually want to thank all my fellow counselors for their respectful questions and, and advice here, because I think that, that bodes well for our city, because I do, having worked under six different community development directors and seen other dynamics where, where that, that relationship was poor, it, it, it makes the position very difficult. So I think it's great that people, you know, have done, you know, I, I think that, that relationship has been good. I mean, I was, worked under Steve Woschowski, I worked in Somerville, I worked in Gloucester. There was, particularly in Gloucester, was a lot of turnover in this position. And I think it, you know, there was just somehow in that community, a lot of distrust between the counselors and the community development director. I think we haven't had that pattern, and it's good to know that's continued on, and that I think people have that relationship now that we have confidence that, you know, Alex will make that same effort. So it is, you know, I had notes here about, you know, it's important for the community development director to be a good listener. I think there's all that expectation as counselors. I always say that, you know, we have all the constituent input, but often not the, the resources, so we're looking, the community development department becomes a problem solver. I mean, I think in, as we as a council, I mean, one of our objectives is that master plan. And it is that, creating that balance between, you know, the new and the old. I guess the one question I had for you was that, you know, one of the things, when I worked in Somerville, I was started in the first month of the Kurti Tony administration, and within a year, almost everybody had left big, big positions. And so, and I, and I think it was unfortunate, because I, my, my boss at the time really forced out a lot of, a lot of people who had a lot of community knowledge, but didn't necessarily often have the, the right degree from MIT, or Tufts, or Harvard, because that's where he taught. And so what's your balance of, and approach to making sure that the skills and input of people who are, you know, the born and raised folks get in there? Because I think it's important to mix the quality of life, which makes Malden great, but also to reach greater. So what's your thought on that, and how, how you've worked through those issues? So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Great question. In OSPCD, we have staff who've been there a couple of years, and we've had staff who've been there or with the city for a very long time, and all of them are excellent. So we have a lot of talent and perspective, and the perspective of the newer folks, who are newer to the organization, is very different sometimes from the perspective of the folks who've been here a long time. My goal is to make sure that everyone feels that their opinions and perspectives and skills have value and continue to have value in the organization. I think that scenario you described, in which there's a big change and then everyone leaves, is my, you know, that's my nightmare, nightmare situation. So the role inevitably will be, over time, turnover as there are retirements or people leave. But my hope is, as much as possible, to make sure that people know they're valued here, their work has meaning here. That's why I love working in Malden, is because I feel that our work has an impact. And I want to make sure that the staff knows that as well. And to Counsel Spatafora's point, that means, you know, what's the expression? Sharing the, sharing the credit, or, you know, you know, giving the credit to the staff and taking, taking the blame. That's definitely something that I'm going to be working on, and making sure that, you know, I think that's how you make sure staff feel appreciated and stick around, and also feel comfortable sharing their perspectives, because people are, if you don't ask people what they think, they might not tell you. And that would also be a, be a loss.
All right. Thank you. So I guess I had taken back the gavel anyway. Sorry about that. I, I guess, any other further questions? I don't have any more. So Counsel Linehan's motion to approve the appointment, seconded by Counsel Crowe, clerk will talk, take the role, confirm, to confirm the appointment.
Counselor Colin Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seeca.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Yes. All right. The appointment is confirmed now.
Thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations. So good. All right. Moving on to the next order of business.
Paper 434-24. Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the Code of the City of Malden, MCC, Title VI, Chapter VIII, Section 70, Licensing of Marijuana Establishments is hereby amended as follows. Under subsection D, striking, striking paragraph 2C and inserting in its place the following: Applicant shall enter into a host community agreement, HCA, with the City of Malden. And also amended by, under section, under subsection D, striking paragraph 2D in its entirety, and also amending by striking subsection E in its entirety.
So Counsel Linehan for the paper?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So this is actually pretty straightforward. This is something that the mayor's office and I have been working on this fall. Essentially, the Cannabis Control Commission at the state has issued new guidelines that really streamline host community agreements for equity and parity among communities. And parts of our ordinance are now not compliant with that. It's a simplification, and so essentially what they want communities to do is to either adopt their template host community agreement, or you can waive your right to have an HCA, an agreement completely. And so this language would essentially just take out the sections of our ordinance that go into greater detail on areas that we're not allowed to really reference or talk about anymore, and bring it into compliance with what the state wants us to do. So it really is just aligning with the new state law. My hope is that we can refer to ordinance to discuss in case people have questions or want to look at that model, the template that the state has put out. I don't, I don't want to speak for everyone. I think we probably don't want to waive our right to have host community agreements, but it's something that we could talk about in committee. It really limits you from doing things like asking for extra charitable contributions or fees above and beyond what it costs, or what any other business that could go in a similar location would cost. So it's a simplification, very straightforward, hoping to refer to committee.
All right. Any questions? So on Counsel Linehan's motion to refer to rules and ordinance, seconded by Counsel O'Malley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. That paper's referred to committee. Next order of business.
Paper 435-24. Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Personnel and Appointments to whom was referred Paper 370, Series of 2024, Having Considered the Same, Make the Following Report. Committee recommends this appointment out favorably to the council.
All right. So on Counsel Colin Hayes's motion to accept the receipt, the committee report, seconded by Counsel Linehan, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the report is received. Clerk will read the paper.
Paper 370-24. Mayoral Appointment, Roy Watson, 108 Hadley Street, Malden, as a member of the Conservation Commission. Said term to expire September 15th, 2026. Confirmation required.
All right. So Counsel Colin Hayes for the paper, as the vice chair of personnel appointments? Yeah. It's been a little bit, okay. Okay, it's been a bit, a bit of time. Okay, yeah, sorry, yeah, I should have.
That's okay. Um, so.
Oh, one second, sorry. Put, put your, put your light on. There you go, sorry.
Okay, Roy Watson. All right. So we had interviewed and met with Roy, okay, it's coming back to me now, sorry, my apologies.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, we had, and, no, no, he was great. He had tons of experience and where he had come from previously, and we had a great time talking with him, and he was voted out favorably unanimously by the committee.
So, yeah, I'll just have a comment. So he, okay, oh yeah, okay, yeah, sorry, yeah, go ahead then.
Sorry, thank you. I had my light on, I didn't think you'd see it. I just wanted to congratulate Roy. Roy used to be a Wood Eight resident before we redistrict him into Counselor Siminelli's ward. He was an amazing constituent over on Hadley with our flooding issues over there. He has a wealth of knowledge in this area, and I think that he is going to be a huge asset on the Conservation Committee. So I welcome Roy. It's nice, before he was redistricted, I should say, not many people in Wood Eight actually like to come and be on our commissions. We, we have a little bit of a problem getting people to get involved over in Wood Eight. So it's nice to see people on that side of the city that are actually getting engaged, and Roy is going to be a huge asset. So I welcome him and I congratulate him. Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's true. He did mention that.
Yeah.
And, yes, he seems very active.
Yeah.
Took a little bit of time off and then jumped back in, wanting to come back out.
Yeah, no, he, you know, just, I'll say, he is, was the, on the Carlisle, Massachusetts Conservation Commission, the chair, I mean, he's taken all the Mass Association of Conservation Commission training, and, and it's particularly, I know Townline Brook, which is near Hadley Street, that area really needs some dedicated people to focus on, so it's great that Roy stepped forward. So I think that's something that I've been, you know, focusing on a bit under the, some of the ARPA work and, and working to get that, that Brook and, and the whole east side of Malden to focus on the flooding issues. So it's great to know that there'll be someone on the Conservation Commission who have that very much in mind. And he even did some great work, reaching out to Everett, too, to deal with some of the flooding issues that were caused from Everett. So definitely someone skilled and motivated, and, you know, he's an attorney by training, so. He will be a great asset to the commission, so.
Yep. There's a lot of lawyers in that meeting, I remember that.
So on Counsel Colin Hayes's motion, seconded by Counsel Seeca, clerk will take the role.
Counselor Colin Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seeca.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel President Winslow.
Yes. So that appointment's confirmed, all right. So on, next, clerk will read the next report. Oh, let's see, we, okay, okay.
Paper three, sorry, Paper 436-24, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Personnel and Appointments, after meeting to review and interview candidates for the Ward Two resident member of the Community Preservation Committee, Having Considered the Same, Make the Following Report. Committee recommends Lisette Alvarado to fill the unexpired term of Cameron Lane.
So Counsel Colin Hayes for the committee. All right. Oh, let's see, I guess we, motion to accept the committee report, seconded by Counsel Crowe. So all those in favor, accept the report, and then it would, all right, so then Counsel Colin Hayes for the committee.
All right. I should.
What? Okay, sorry, okay, sorry.
Paper 437-24. Council Appointment, Lisette Alvarado, 492 Pleasant Street, Malden, as the Ward Two resident member of the Community Preservation Committee, to fill the unexpired term of Cameron Lane, expiring March 15th of 2026.
Okay, now Counsel Colin Hayes for the committee, so. Yeah, okay, sorry, that's, all right. There you go.
Okay, hi. So, yes, we had met with, the, the good thing here is Lisette had applied before, and she did not get the appointment the last time, so I was really excited that she came back again. That shows that, you know, fortitude and that's how, how much she really wanted to be a part of the CPC. So we did interview her, and I know a lot of the folks, one of the things that stood out is she had talked to her experience on historic conservation issues, and this is something that, you know, we felt would go nicely, complement the board that we already have. So it was a pleasure meeting with her, and she was reported out favor, you know, unanimously, in favor.
All right. Counselor Crowe, yeah?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually going to make a motion that we put this back out to, for a member. We had a really wonderful conversation with the two candidates that we did have, and it really was about, and Ms. Alvarado, it has nothing to do with the, you know, the candidates that were there, talked about the historic preservation, and I knew people were really gravitated towards that. And we also talked about the importance of the affordable housing, as we have lots of other things, you know, happening with the MBTA, community zoning, the AUDs, ADUs, the, other things that happened that really put that in, into perspective. And after that conversation, that night, when I thought about it, and I went back and looked at who was on the CPC now, and that's a, that's a glaring miss. And I think we should need to, should put it back out there to the wards that need to be representative, that really is a little more focused, that that's what we're looking for. Putting together, we do have something for the Housing Authority, except they've never developed affordable housing. It's very complex, and our other candidate has done that in the past, but a while ago. So I do think, you know, if we're really going to be serious about affordable housing, we should put this out there and be a little more, just as we talked about Mr. Watson before, you know, really someone that has that, that skill set, and that can sort of bring that to the PCT.
Is that a motion? Um, yeah, that's, I guess, a motion to, to not make this appointment and to reopen for appointments. So Counsel Siminelli seconded that, so I guess it's not a motion to table, so we'll, I guess we'll continue to have, we'll put that, we'll, let's continue to discuss this, and then we'll, then we'll, we'll take up that motion before we, that motion will be ahead of any motion to appoint. All right. Counsel O'Malley.
I want to put my light on at the wrong time.
Okay. Okay, so.
Okay. Um, so, um, I know that this is, this is an unusual motion to make, you know, it's not, it's not common for us to do that. Um, you know, I, I, it's hard, it's hard for, for me to, to, to support that, knowing that Ms. Alvarado has applied multiple times, and that the, the committee did vote favorably to recommend her candidacy. That, that being said, I do understand what the fresh, what, what some of the concerns are that, that have been expressed. You know, one of the, the challenges that I think that we all, me included, have to learn is that, you know, the way we behave and the, and the words that we use and how we express ourselves have consequences, and, you know, when you have membership of a public body, whether you are the city council or the CPC, you know, there, there's a role for, you know, community activists to be pushing on us and to try to get us to move in the direction that the community wants, and that's a really important role, but once you become a member of a body, whether that's a board like on UMA or the CPC, how you handle yourself and how you engage with others and elected officials, it, it really is important, and so I do think that, you know, if, if the council does vote tonight to appoint Ms. Alvarado to the CPC, I hope that what she will hear from me right now is that, let's work together, you know, let's, let's assume good intentions, you know, it doesn't help to, you know, maybe vilify people online, you know, everyone has the, the best interests of Malden and the children of Malden at heart, this is something I have been saying from the beginning, whether or not you support turf at Roosevelt or grass at Roosevelt, this is not people who are trying to hurt children, we all want what's best for children, and I know that it shouldn't necessarily completely turn on Roosevelt, but that is a large elephant in the room, and so I don't support necessarily going back out, but I do support us all trying to assume good intentions and work together. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seika.
Thank you, Council President. I unfortunately missed this committee meeting, so my apologies that I was not in attendance, but I want to take this time, just in case Counselor Crowe's motion does not pass this evening, to be transparent and to share why, why I will not be supporting this nomination. So the first C in CPC stands for community, and to me, that means those who serve have to have an open mind to the entire Malden community. Proposals can come from anyone, and committee members rarely need to be welcoming, willing to listen, and have demonstrated an ability to be respectful in dealing with others. As, I'm going to piggyback off of Counselor O'Malley, I feel like some things that I have seen online and behaviors I have seen throughout the community, I think there's some conflict of interests with some groups that the candidate sits on and will be working with the CPC, I, I just don't think that this person is the right fit to, to sit on this committee. I, I think that, unfortunately, looking at what has been posted online, I don't think she would be able to have an unbiased opinion on things that come before her, and I think that somebody sitting on such, you know, an important community, committee, they need to be unbiased, so I, I will not be supporting this nom, this appointment this evening if Counselor Crowe's motion does, does not go through, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Seika. Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to support Counselor Crowe's motion, and I wanted to just explain that, because I think this is a tremendously awkward conversation to have. One of the things that I think just stinks about personnel is that you interview people, you know, as we should publicly, but when you're trying to decide between folks who are putting themselves out there, it's happening in a public forum, and in this case, we really had a long discussion, and we were not, we were not all on the same page, we had only two people, which in hindsight, you know, we had, it was a late meeting to begin with, I think folks were tired, we'd had a lot of committees that night, we had only two candidates, I think if I could have a do-over, I probably would have either tabled it or said, maybe we reopen it and see if we get more candidates and get more consensus. I had made a motion in favor of the other applicant, because I had, in my years dealing with the CPC and now sitting on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board and overseeing the ARPA funds with Counselor Colon-Hayes, I just feel like we, we desperately need someone who has some level of professional housing expertise, particularly because we're going to be entering such a tough market and such a tough financial time, I think, not to say that it's easy to create and build and preserve affordable housing in a good market, but it's, you know, twice, if not three times, as hard when we're entering a downturn like we are now with some challenging market scenarios, so I, I was feeling like that was the clear gap that we needed to fill, I had advocated pretty heavily in favor of that expertise. I think, again, because this committee deliberates publicly, whenever we are split and it becomes clear that the prevailing vote is going to go one way, I think we like to have a unanimous recommendation, but in reality, in this case, this committee was not unanimous, and we really struggled, and, you know, just being fully honest and transparent, I wish that I had made a motion to table it at the time, unfortunately, I didn't, and that leaves us before the public on television right now, having to do this, as some of my colleagues have said, it's hard not to make things personal when it is literally about one person, but in this case, I really would like to see us reopen and kind of start over, and, you know, I will commit to being more open with my thoughts and not, you know, just kind of, I felt like I sort of capitulated to what the committee wanted in the moment, and that's putting a person in our community in a really unfair circumstance on live television right now, and so I do want to apologize for that, but I am going to be supporting this motion, because I think that we really don't have the consensus, and particularly with how stake, how high the stakes are with housing in our community, especially having gone to the CPC meeting last week, we really, really need that perspective is, is where I'm at on this, and so that's why I'm going to be supporting this motion.
All right, thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor Colon-Hayes.
Thank you. So I'm shocked and very disappointed in what I'm hearing, when Counselor Crowe, I, what you said was fine, when you were just saying that you wanted to, you know, we were talking about maybe different experiences and housing, that was completely fine, made sense, until it became a personal, a personal thing here while we're out on camera. I really, I do wish Counselor Linehan, you did say something in the committee, as far as yourself, it was unanimous, it wasn't like it was split, it was a unanimous vote, and that's why we're there. Philip, who was also interviewing, was tremendous. Philip was a great guy, I would have absolutely swung the other way, I, I said that, he was like a mentor to me, it was very hard, but I'm, like, I'm sorry.
Okay, Counselor Seika.
Okay, so, the, yeah, this is really, really bad form, I'm really, really disappointed in what I just heard from people, and we need to, every time I talk about norms, and talking about norms here, Facebook rules, years I have talked about Facebook, like, where Facebook goes and like, what, maybe we should have some rules about what it is that you can and cannot say, especially when it's your personal Facebook page, so I'm fine with whatever you do, but I wouldn't go without just saying that I'm just floored. And I was going to leave, because I had to go home to New York, and I, I wish I did.
All right. Counselor McDonald.
Uh, you know, what I will add is that I also, I did not make this meeting, I'm not on the Personnel Appointments Committee, I think this is, I think this is clearly a tough conversation, and the political overtones are clear, I, I think that the, I, I think, I have, I have never observed us send a nomination, like, with some, with a nomination in hand, reference from the committee, the full council vote to open a search again, and I think I would have been more comfortable with a motion to just refer this back to committee and say, there's just not enough clarity or intention behind that or process enough, that you need to take another swing at it. I, I, I just think it's a very weird precedent to say there was a unanimous recommendation from the committee, and now the, the committee is, and now the full council would vote to reopen the search, I would rather send it back to committee and have that be up to the committee to decide how to proceed with that. I also think, frankly, given this conversation, that it might be fair to offer Ms. Alvarado the opportunity to respond to some of the things that have been said here that would not be on live television, but also just to, I mean, there may be conversations that are worth having with her as a candidate that would give her due and appropriate consideration. If the Personnel Appointments Committee feels it's really essential to repost the, you know, to go out and open applications again, then I, I think that's a viable thing for you to do, but I think that would be a better venue to handle this than the full council, so I don't know if I, if you're, if you're open to a friendly amendment, my recommendation would be that this actually just get referred back to committee, and then you all can figure out if you want to repost it from there.
All right. Counselor Seika.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make a comment for the people that are watching at home. Normally, for a city council meeting, if we, any votes that we take on the floor this evening, we have 24 hours to reconsider that vote from the time that we take it. When we're in a committee meeting, we're not allowed to reconsider, because we actually have the floor to change our mind. This is not something that is normally done, but it has happened before, so because you're, you have a second opportunity to vote on it, even though it comes out of the committee unanimously, you can change your mind once we get on television and we have the vote, we're allowed to vote on the floor. So this, this, although it doesn't always necessarily happen in committee, it has happened many times over the past 12 years of me sitting up here, that a councillor has reconsidered their vote that they have taken on the floor, and as far as, you know, this shouldn't be on television, everybody up here talks about transparency, transparency, I'm going to say it again, transparency, there's no better place to have a discussion than on here, and as a mother of two children who are 25 and 22 and completely glued to their phone and social media, I'm going to make this comment as well, I tell them every day, the world is watching you, no matter what you do, no matter what you post, the picture you think on Snapchat that supposedly magically disappears, it could come back to haunt you for the rest of your life. So although Counselor Colon-Hayes is upset that she, the comments about Facebook and we should have policies and procedures, every job that I know of, the majority of them do have social media conduct policies, and I think that we would, this is exactly, again, what I tell my children, and I think a lot of parents at home are telling their children, it's, once it's out there, it's out there forever, and it could be used against you in the tiniest thing. Me of all people, understand how that could happen, things can come back to haunt you from your past that were simple, funny little things that turn into something big that wasn't intended for what, at the time, it was, it wasn't intended for that at, at the time that it was posted, so I, I just want to reiterate that we are allowed to change our minds, it's, it's not as simple as a reconsideration and we come back, so because we're not, we're allowed to vote on it on the floor from the committee, you're not allowed to reconsider your decision, but I, I am happy that Counselor Crowe put this forward, and I am, I, I will be willing to support to send it back to committee, but I, I think that we should, we should start over, and I, I don't think anybody need, should have to come back, I think that it's, it sounds pretty, sounds pretty, you know, I think we need to look at a different direction, so thank you.
Counselor Linehan.
I just think that on that, where it was a motion made, it was seconded, you have to take that up, then take the reconsideration?
Yeah.
No, reconsideration.
No, no, I mean, I, the plan right now is to take up Counselor Crowe's, actually, I want to comment on it, too, so, before we make any amendment to the, if we, before we make any amendment to Counselor Crowe's motion, I want to speak to it, too, so Counselor Linehan and Counselor Spatafora.
Yes, and thank you for the second time, I appreciate you recognizing, so I had just a clarification, my assumption was that it automatically would go back to committee via your motion, because we manage the entire process, we advertise, the Personnel Chair actually advertises, invites people in, et cetera, notifies them, so I think to Counselor McDonald's point, I think what you're saying is actually, what my read on Counselor Crowe's motion was what we were going to do, so I don't really, I don't feel that we need to actually amend it, because I think procedurally, that's what would happen anyway.
Right, right.
But I, I also want to just appreciate Counselor Seika's point about the reconsideration, because I think, you know, speaking for myself, I, I reflected the day after we took this vote, realized that I had not stood up for myself for long enough, and that there was just no avenue to reconsider, or for the chair to send it back, you know, for me to reach out to the Personnel Chair and express that I may have changed my mind or felt that we didn't handle it the right way, there truly is no procedural route for us to get something back in committee other than bringing it to the floor, and it stinks, and I don't know if we want to look at our rules, I don't know if we even want to go that, that way, but at the moment, there is no other way to do it than what we're doing right now, I fully recognize that this is not ideal, but I also think, in the interest of transparency, we're all up here explaining why we're doing what we're doing, we, this is a critically important committee that handles millions of dollars for the city, it's important that we are all comfortable with our vote on this, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor Spatafora.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and I will speak, I know we're spending an awful lot of time with this, but I think it's important, I, I was, I don't, I don't want to use the word, I don't think the council was, hopefully, rushed, it was a great discussion, I'm only a member of that committee, and I, I will probably take some, I will take all the blame in terms of, there was, there was viewpoints, and these are all public, so nothing out here I'm saying is, you know, unsecretive, but there was just, you know, three councils sharing their viewpoints on two candidates, and a couple, you know, a couple councils, you know, brought out some attributes on one, I brought out an attribute of, of another candidate, and honestly, I, I think it's not an excuse, but it was just, took a vote, thought about it, and we left the building there, right? I think Council amended it, said it lightly, you know, sometimes the end of these meetings, we, we, our brain shuts off, we don't think thoroughly, and, and, and I talked to Counselor Crowe the next day, and I said, you know, not that the candidates were bad, I just felt like maybe we didn't, we didn't, we should have continued that discussion, and I, I don't think it was, it wasn't a final decision, but we made a final decision, and Counselor Seika made a great point, we, we don't have the ability to do a do-over, but in the same token is, that's why it comes back to the council, there is a little bit of a circuit breakup, it's not normal, it, it's unfortunate, you don't want to do this in public, but there is a checks and balances system, I mean, I've seen councils make a motion to move a paper and then vote against it, I mean, talk about counterintuitive, but that's what you can do. What concerns me a little bit, and I don't want to talk bad about, you know, about somebody that left, and it's not my intent, but I just feel like, in this day and age, the ability, the ability for you to change your mind is important, right? It's a principle that we all, it's not a sign of weakness, I think it's a sign of strength, we all have the ability and the fortitude to say, if we change our mind, and I think we're just saying, we're changing our mind, not necessarily against this particular candidate, but we want to explore other opportunities, and, and this candidate might be another finalist, and we have more time to do so, and I, I'm supporting this because I think I initiated that conversation, we weren't, we were, we were just trying to get through that meeting, a motion was made, and honestly, I, I felt after that meeting that we, we should have explored more and asked more tough questions, and again, all the other councils have set it up here, this committee has an enormous amount of, of power, and, and their thumb, their thumbprints are on almost every aspect of this community, and we just got to make sure that we vet all those residents. Two great candidates, I'd like to see two more, and then we take the vote over and come back and do it again, but I will support this amendment, a motion, and I, and I, too, thank you, Counselor Linehan, for saying, I thought that was initial intent was, so send it back to committee, we side open, we can open it, and, and maybe that, those two individuals can stay finalists, as we open it up and we go through the process again.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, so, no, I just want to say, so I am the chair of the committee, so, and a few things, you know, we advertised this position twice, advertising in the summer, when it, when Cameron Lane resigned for personal reasons, we didn't get any response, so I just thought, well, it's August, whatever, let's come back in September, re-advertise it. I know in the springtime, we got, you know, a, a whole list of candidates, and I think it was a little more flexible then, because we had a bit broader range of, you know, wards that we could choose from, and so we, you know, and I did make sure that, all you councillors know that it was available, I did remind the councillors of the, in the wards, and I, I mean, even, you know, you know, encouraged some people to apply, this is who applied, and so I felt, in, in terms of transparency, we should give the people who actually stepped up the opportunity, but I do agree, I mean, at the meeting itself, I, I wasn't certain whether, one of the dilemmas on the Personnel Appointments Committee, it's often, you, it's good to have that decision perhaps made when it's fresh in your mind, because if you wait a week, everybody, you know, or two weeks or a month, people can forget about that. I mean, and I know when I phrased about what the options were, you know, we had, you know, two candidates, plus we had, we, I did say, and we had the option to reopen, and, and the thing is, as chair, I couldn't make that motion, I just offered, these are the alternatives, no one took up that motion, so, so then the committee went ahead, I think, maybe a little speedily, to, to make a decision, it's not unprecedented in personnel's appointments to try to make that decision that night, because that's the time we're all together and it's fresh on our minds, and we get busy and we forget, so that was the decision, but I think people, I think afterwards, I mean, I think So that was the decision, but I think people, I think afterwards, I mean, I think it, to me, you know, I, I'm frustrated after a couple rounds, we, we didn't have a broader list of candidates to bring. I mean, you saw tonight, as a council, we had someone appointed, we were very unanimous. I think it's a concern, this is what I call an appointment to a strong advisory committee. We can, as a council, the mayor can't spend a nickel of our community preservation money without a majority of the community preservation committee's people coming together and voting on that. So they are very important, you know, so I'm, I would support reopening it. If we really don't have a strong consensus as a council, I think we should, you know, seek candidates that, that have that. So that's, that's where I'm at. And I don't think it, I mean, sending it back to the committee to make that decision, I think it's just a decision, we're reopening it and we will re-interview. And, I mean, maybe we can say, we're not denying this appointment right now, we, you know, we can discuss that in the committee. But right now, we can, we, we, we're opening it up to, for other applicants and have other interviews and we can, you know, we've done those interviews and we can see where we go from there. But, so that's where I'm at. So, thank you. All right, Counselor McDonald.
So I just want to say, I, you know, I will, I will support the Personnel Appointments Committee in reopening the process and saying, you know, the, presumably the existing candidates get to stay in the process if we're not denying anything. I do just think from a process perspective, it is important that at some point, the, the committee circle back with Ms. Alvarado and give her a chance to offer anything else that she would like to as part of this process and share anything that, you know, is relevant, given this discussion that has transpired. It feels really important that, you know, that she has a chance to speak, she's not here tonight, nor do we typically interview people on the floor, but that feels like an important and fair part of the process to someone who's clearly put themselves through applications a couple times now. So I hope you will take that under advisement.
All right. So any further lights here, or do you, Counselor O'Malley? All right, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to agree with Counselor McDonald, I do think that it's important to allow Ms. Alvarado a chance to, to address either the Personnel and Appointments Committee, I think that's probably the best, also allowing the applicants who did apply a chance, you know, if it's going to be reopened. Again, I'm not in support of that, I don't know if I was clear, I'm really not in support of sending it back, but I understand why there is a consensus to potentially do that. I hope that that was clear, I don't know if I came across clearly earlier. Thank you.
So, so no further lights. So, so on Counselor Crowe's motion, yeah, we can take a roll. On Counselor Motion, Counselor Crowe's motion to reopen, I guess it's reopen the interviewing process, seconded by Counselor Seeca, to seek additional candidates, I guess that's the word. On Counselor Crowe's motion to seek additional candidates and do additional interviews for this position, seconded by Counselor Seeca, we will take the roll.
Sorry, I'm just writing that down.
Does that make sense? That's what we're doing, we're seeking additional candidates and conducting additional interviews?
Yeah.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
No.
Counselor Seeca.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel President Winslow.
Yes.
The motion passes.
So the motion, so that, we will seek additional candidates and hold additional interviews. All right, next order of business.
The docket is clear.
Docket is clear. So then, so next, that, we have personal privilege there, so let's see, who's quick on the lights here? All right. All right, Counselor Seeca wins the race today.
Whoa, I was hoping to be first. I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving holiday this week. Counselor Spatafora and I spent the afternoon yesterday at the Bread of Life passing out 136 turkeys for our annual Thanksgiving dinner that is to be held at Malden High School this Thursday. We had some fun, I met Carrie's mother.
Okay.
Yes, she lives in Malden, I had no idea. And your turkey was under Stacy, not you. But anyway, so really quickly, I have a few things. This Saturday, Counselor Spatafora and I are hosting the Home for the Holiday Street Hockey Tournament. It begins at 8:00 a.m. We are dedicating a newly redesigned street hockey rink to one of our fallen police officers, Sergeant Michael Giordano. We will do an official ribbon cutting and the puck will drop about 8:00 a.m. Before the rink was taken down and replaced, they had done a dedication to a former Maldonian, Joey Vikovicious, who passed away back in September of 2015 from bone cancer. He was one of the original co-founders of the Home for the Holiday Street Hockey Tournament. So we have also invited his mother to put back up his number, the 92, on the side of the board. So I thought that that would be fitting since it was there before, we're going to do it again. So if anybody wants to join us, we have Todd and Jilly from the Boston Bruins coming to sing for us at 8:00 a.m. this Saturday morning, and it'll be a lot of fun. You can still sign up to play street hockey, or you can come and, you know, share, share the excitement of the Giordano family because they are so excited that this memorial rink is going to be named after their dad. If you want to bring an unwrapped gift, we're going to start off the kickoff for a Public Safety Toy Drive. And then also, a new little thing, let me get back to it really quickly, we have a few Malden Cyclones, we have two Malden Cyclones cheerleading teams and one football team as of last night that is going to be attending Nationals in Disney World. A bunch of them are leaving December 6th. This is the first time since 2009 that we've actually had a football team make it to Nationals in Disney, so it's kind of a big deal. They put up a Cheddar Up 60-40 raffle today on social media. It is $10 a ticket, or you can get three for 20. If everybody could get on and do a quick donation, their goal is for 10,000, but the higher the pot, the more money the winner that they pick on December 5th will receive, and it'll help their program tremendously. As a parent who has been there and done that before, it's a very small window to come up with the amount of money to get your kid on a plane in a hotel room to Florida. The football team is a little different than cheerleaders, they actually have to stay like a whole week. It's not just, you know, a few days. The football players, depending on how often they win, is the longer that they stay. So if, if everybody could get on social media and share that Cheddar Up 60-40 event, I'm sure that Malden Cyclones would be greatly appreciated, and I think that's all I got, Counsel.
Can you send that to Lisa?
I can send it to Lisa, yep.
So we can all get that. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple announcements myself. I just wanted to let everybody know that myself and the mayor will be doing a neighborhood family holiday celebration and lighting ceremony this coming Sunday, December 1st, from 4:00 to 6:00, down at the Lincoln Commons on Cross Street. There's going to be hot chocolate and cookies for everybody. There'll be Santa and Mrs. Claus there, the Grinch will be having cookies given out by Wicked Good Cookies while they last. And we'll have an over 45,000 lights, I think was the last count of tree lighting that'll be going on at Lincoln Commons. We'll be giving out light-up necklaces and wands, and so the kids should be having a great time. Also, a date to be determined, because we're just waiting for the Malden Housing Authority and the YMCA to call us back, but myself and the mayor's office are working on doing a toy drive for the Malden Housing Authority, particularly down at the Newland Street Housing Projects and at Bowden Street Apartments. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Now Counselor McDonald.
Hi, I've got two things. One is that we are right now taking applications for our new Climate Action and Sustainability Commission. Those are appointments made by the mayor, but you all very generously appoint, not generously, it's part of your duty under the charter, but you did nonetheless unanimously vote to update the ordinance to create this new Climate Action Sustainability Commission.
Right.
So I believe the applications are being accepted through December 11th, so if you are interested in working on that implementation of our new climate action plan on climate resiliency, lowering our greenhouse gases, protecting our vulnerable communities from rising temperatures and worsening storms, and doing our part to help the planet, then check out the Climate Action Sustainability Commission. There are two youth members as well, I will note, and you can go to any high school as long as you're a Malden resident. The other thing I just want to flag for folks is that it's going to be a busy December for the Finance Committee. We just had six, six appropriations or financial papers referred tonight in addition to a piece from the Treasurer about, about property appropriation and, as well as the order that we passed at a recent meeting about the Roosevelt Park financing remaining questions. So we're going to have full agendas the next three weeks to finish out the year. Please review materials and bring questions in advance so we can process these by the end of the, the end of the calendar year. And we will certainly be meeting next week. Please bring your questions and thoughts about the appropriation so we can make sure that we're getting those answered and we're ready to take votes in the weeks ahead. As always, those will be available on Zoom, and we'll post a link in the meeting agenda for those who want to follow along at home.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Counsel President. So I just want to draw attention, you may have seen a few folks up here wearing orange ribbons. Starting on November 25th, the Zonta Club of Malden and Zonta International celebrates 16 days of activism as an effort to end violence against women and gender-based violence. I'm asking everybody to come down to City Hall, there is a display up where you can learn more about that. There were 29 victims of domestic violence in Massachusetts between January 1st, 2024, and September 20th, 2024, ages ranging from the age of seven up to 76 years old. So we are asking for everybody to, to learn more and help us fight domestic violence and gender-based violence. One of the things we work on is blessing bags, so you can check out the zontamalden.com website to learn how to donate towards the blessing bags, which are given to women escaping domestic violence situations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counselor Spatafora.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to wish everybody, is my mic on? I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That is this Thursday, right?
Yes, yes.
I just feel like I'm the only person who's said that right now, so I want to make sure. Good luck to all the high school football teams, I know it's, you know, they say food, football, and family. Enjoy that day. I also do want to remind people that on Thursday at Malden High, the Francis and Barbara Brown Thanksgiving Dinner is being hosted by the Bread of Life in the mayor's office. That's, I think, believe that starts at 12 to 2.
12 to 2, yeah.
The other thing is, so come down if you want to volunteer, it's always a great day. And I also want to, in advance, thank Marie Louise, the mayor's office, and then all the drivers and support staff. You know, I complained long ago that I, I wasn't, I didn't like the way the routes were organized, it was done by paper, so that person left and they volunteered mayor to do the job. So I'm stuck with scheduling, there'll be 1,000 meals scheduled Monday morning, excuse me, Thursday morning. Ironically, Malden, not only do we do our part for our community, we go all the way up to North Reading, all the way, all the way south from Reading, Stonham, Wakefield, Malden, Melrose, Chelsea, Everett, Winthrop. Those are all delivered out of Malden High that day. We have, you know, at least 30 or 40 drivers, I know Counselor Crowe comes, she's coming this year with her sister. It's a, it's a great event, it helps all those people who unfortunately cannot get out of the house or just don't have the means to do it, but I want to thank that team in advance, and I'm sure Counselor Linehan will speak about the tree lighting ceremony for Ward 3. Thank you, Mr. President.
Great, thank you. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you very much. To echo Counselor Spatafora, just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. On December 11th, I don't know if I'm taking this from you, but I guess it doesn't hurt, there will be a joint ordinance and planning board hearing at 7:00 p.m. We're going to be talking about various papers. One of the papers is the definition of a car wash in other auto service centers. So if you're interested in car washes or Main Street, please come to the joint ordinance and planning board hearing on December 11th at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. On a lighter kind of note, this, this Friday is Black Friday, and then we're going to have Cyber Monday. If you're in the market for an electronic in the next four years, I would buy your electronics then before the tariffs get set in. So definitely take advantage of Black Friday and Cyber Monday for your electronics. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, as Counselor Spatafora mentioned, we have the Felsmir Pond Tree Lighting this weekend, it's going to be Saturday at 4:00. I think that's right at dusk, the sun goes down around 4:25, so we're hoping to turn the lights on pretty, a little bit faster this year. We did get some feedback that the event was a little bit cold and long last year, so we tightened up the agenda.
Yes.
We are going to have the High School Coral Arts Society performing, we have some 375th anniversary cookies that we are going to be giving out, and Counselor Spatafora had the fun idea to give out pop cups, so please bring your furry friends in festive attire, and we will be giving out the little puppaccino, it's just whipped cream in a cup, I don't have a dog, but that's what I'm told, I'm serving it, so.
Puppaccino.
And then the only other thing I did want to mention is, I had mentioned this a couple weeks ago, but two Mondays from now, on December 9th at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers, we are going to be having a community meeting on the status of the Malden Hospital project. So at the moment, that's just going to be an in-person meeting, I am working on getting a hybrid option. At a bare minimum, we'll record it, so if folks can't be there, we'll make sure that we have a tape for folks to watch. But 6:00 p.m. council chambers on Monday, December 9th, if you want to hear the latest on the Malden Hospital project.
Counselor Condon.
Thank you.
Oh, you just, I'll turn your back on.
Thank you, Counsel President. Certainly plenty to do for our residents, and I'd like to wish all the families a very happy Thanksgiving. Eat plenty of turkey and go Malden High School.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, yeah, go Malden. So, yeah, I was, I had the honor of going to the Malden Medford luncheon today at the Moose Lodge, so the teams both look very ready. That's, the game is at 10 o'clock at McDonald's Stadium this year, so please come out and root for the home team. Go, go Golden Tornadoes there. And so just wanting to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. For me, it's always a wonderful time to get together with family, and it's a special day, it's one of the few holidays that pretty much everybody gets an opportunity. To our first responders and nurses and other doctors who do have to work, thank you for your dedication to the community and hope you have another chance to enjoy with your family in another way. Maplewood Square, 6 o'clock on Sunday, the 1st, right after Counselor Simonelli's thing in Lincoln Common. We, the Maplewood Association is sponsoring the lighting of the Maplewood Square Christmas tree. I was down there putting up the, the holiday murals this weekend, so just, it'll be a little simpler than the other ones, but we will have hot chocolate cookies and some good cheer there and a special guest as always, so that is happening. And then I do, in terms of that December 11th hearing before the planning board with the Rules and Ordinance Committee, there is an important thing in terms of doing a, adopting and looking at, considering adopting an ordinance for site plan review for educational and religious institutions that we put forward. So really encourage, you know, people in Ward 5 and 6 to come out, that particularly, that it does affect the Maplewood area in a big way. And then I do, just want to take a moment of silence. Joe Summers, who was a, he ran for Ward 6 City Council back in the day, he passed away earlier in the month, so I just wanted to take a moment of silence for, for him. So, so he was a contractor and has a family in town, so just wanted to give a moment of silence for Joe, resident of Ward 6 for a long time. And on that, seeing no further lights, on Counselor O'Malley's motion adjourned, seconded by Counselor Condon, all of us in favor, say aye. All right, Counselor. All right. Good. All right. Good.